Good evening. Would everyone please rise for the prayer and pledge of allegiance?
Dear Heavenly Father, we are grateful for the opportunity that you give us to work together through the wisdom you grant to us in response to any challenges we may face in providing a great public school system to this community, especially those challenges that we will face in the coming weeks. We accept our responsibilities in meeting the needs of every child, and we pray that at all levels of education, local, state, and federal, that children always remain the priority in all decisions that are made. These things we ask in your name.
Amen. Ms. Jackson, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
To the pledge of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please. Ms. Fochek.
Ms. Sessvedo?
Here.
Mr. Campbell?
Here.
Mr. Egan?
Here.
Ms. Jackson?
Here.
Ms. Lemoine?
Here.
Mr. England?
Here.
Ms. Disar?
Here.
Mr. Long is not with us.
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Warner?
Here.
And Ms. White?
Here.
Thank you, Ms. Fochek. Tonight is a special meeting, but it also includes all agenda items that would have taken place next week, so this is our special meeting, but also our regular monthly meeting. So first item on the agenda is update on school closures. Ms. Fochek?
Okay. I know we as a community, as well as a state, and as well as a nation, are facing some serious challenges in the days and weeks to come. And as a result, our governor, as we all know, on Friday made the announcement that schools would close beginning yesterday and remain closed until April 13th, in the hopes that that would be one factor in reducing the spread of the COVID-19 virus. Now, in reaction to this, we have had a tremendous response from our community, and especially from our employees, as to how we prepare to proceed under these conditions. Our first priority dealt with what are we going to do with the children of the parish in terms of ensuring that they receive breakfast, that they receive lunch each day in the environment in which we find ourselves today. So we have mobilized over a weekend, a massive school feeding enterprise, so that we can make sure that all children in St. Bernard Parish who would not normally maybe have access to breakfast and lunch on a daily basis, that we will be able to provide. We have opened at all of our elementary schools, and then two of our middle schools, and at the high schools. So all elementary schools, Andrew Jackson Middle School, St. Bernard Middle School, and at Shellman High School, so 10 sites. We have opened cafeterias where our ladies are doing the cooking, and our principals, assistant principals, and volunteers among the faculty and central office staff members are making it happen. Today was our first day. We are able to feed through this, the food service program, any child 18 years of age or younger, and that includes preschool children, toddlers, one-year-olds, two-year-olds, three-year-olds, a breakfast and a lunch each day. It includes all children, whether you go to public, private, or parochial schools within St. Bernard Parish. We're also able to provide that same service to students who attend our schools, who have significant disabilities over the age of 18 up until they're 22. So any child who attends, or any young adult who attends our schools, who has a significant disability between those ages, we're also able to provide that for them. So between the hours of 11:00 and 1:00 each day, we will be open, and it'll be as a drive-up style, drive-through style primarily. Unless the family has no transportation, they can walk up to the school cafeteria, can drive through. The child's not have to be present in the car. The adult can tell us the number of children that they have that they can feed, and we will provide a lunch that has been cooked that day, and along with that, a grab-and-go breakfast for the next morning. So they'll get two meals as they drive through between 11:00 and 1:00. Lunch for that day, and a breakfast for the following morning. We opened today to do it, for one first day, and we had close to 2,000 children that we served both a breakfast and a lunch to. So we're looking at almost 4,000 meals throughout the parish. We anticipate that this number is going to grow as the days move on. So we are pledging that we are, as long as we have the food available, and our vendors are able to provide that to us, that we will continue to do it throughout the school closing time. And I just want to take this opportunity. Joni Bloom is our food service director. She has done a phenomenal job in putting all of this together. Janine Atkinson is our right-hand person who works with Joni, who has been with her all weekend as we have planned this, and in the last two days running around making it happen. But supporting that effort, and I hate to begin naming people, but I can't help it at some times. Jason Dewey from our maintenance staff has coordinated all of his people in terms of getting the signs together. If you pass by any of the schools, you can see very clearly the path you have to take. The signage is up. The custodians and the maintenance staff are there to assist. We're directing the people through it. He's done an incredible job of making that happen. Our staff here at the central office, Jeremy Curth and her people, made all the signs for us very quickly yesterday. Our principals, our assistant principals out there at the school sites are leading that effort at each site. And it's really funny, you know, I visited, I went through six of them today, six out of the 10. Mary Lumetta went through the others, and we are, I mean, we're just so impressed. The teachers, the group at, the group at Goche made a little infomercial that they posted, encouraging their families to come, to avail themselves of this opportunity. I drove through Shellman Elementary, and all the teachers are there, they have special T-shirts on, welcoming the people. I can go on and on and on what the different faculties are doing at each site. So these people, our teachers are in there volunteering their time, our central office people are over there as well. So it takes, this is quite an undertaking to make this happen, because not only do you just cook it, we've got to package it up, bag it, make sure that we've got a reimbursable meal, follow all the guidelines, make, and make sure everything stays the right temperature, and you know the drill from the Department of Health. I contacted our sheriff, Jimmy Pullman. He provided barricades for us to help us in that endeavor, and he had his people coming around and checking on us to see if we needed any assistance. So this has been a tremendous community effort to help us with that. So we think that, you know, any child in St. Bernard Parish should be able to avail themselves of this if their family decided that that was something they wanted to do. So it's been very successful, and I just see it growing each day. So I want to, I want to thank our community. I want to thank our staff, our people here at the central office, the people at the school site, because I know how difficult it was for us to put this together, and now we need to sustain it for quite a period of time. So that basically is the meal situation. As far as any type of online learning app activities that we have while the students are home, each family really has a different situation within their home life. Some families have Internet access, others do not. Some parents have to continue to work, others are home with their children. In order to try to accommodate everyone as much as possible, what we have done, and this is happening all over the state, most of the school systems, we are providing educational opportunities online. They're not going to be, I hope I have no students watching, I guess, but we're not grading them and evaluating them. These are learning opportunities for kids to continue while they're home, for parents to help them with, if at all possible, and to kind of keep them in the habit of stopping each day and doing something of educational value. The elementary teachers, led by LeAnn Harleton, they've done a tremendous job so far with the kindergarten through fifth-grade assignments. If, if parents look on the school websites, on their teacher pages, then you're going to see activities that are suggested for the students to do. We're going to continue to add to those as well. We want to get to the point to, as we go along, that we put some links and resources for students and families to do things like virtual field trips, or visiting museums online, or doing art projects, things that may not be quite as cumbersome as sitting down and doing the basic English, math, science, social studies. If Internet access is not available at the home at this time, when the students left Friday, we hurriedly, at the elementary level, got them to take home the basic set of materials that they have at school. And we also have posted, because you can access that website even if you just have a smartphone at home, just to see what the maybe paper-based activity would be. The students have their materials at home that will direct them to what to utilize week by week. If a student was absent on Friday from the elementary schools, each of those teachers packaged up those workbooks or texts that they had, and if a parent wants to pick it up from the school, all they have to do is call them, and it'll be available for them to pick them up. So at the elementary level, they do have online resources, and there are paper-based resources as well. At the middle and high school level, and then we've asked, you know, the, I think the younger the children, I hate to say this, because I was a high school teacher, but the younger the child, the more, I don't want to say involved that teacher is with the student and the family, but they've got 20 kids in their class. When you get to middle or high school, if I'm a middle school teacher, I might be teaching 150 students a day, because I'm only seeing them 50 minutes a day. Same thing at the high school. So there's not quite as intimate a relationship, I suppose, with the teacher, with the students, and with the parents. So we have asked the elementary teachers, or this week, making a direct contact with the parent. They're making calls, they're going to be communicating through email as well, and trying to assist the parent with whatever they need in terms of helping their students progress while this closure is taking place. At the middle school level, we have posted for each grade level core, core course activities, meaning English, math, science, and social studies, grade level by grade level, on the homepage of the particular school, rather than going to an individual teacher page, so that we have sixth grade information, seventh and eighth grade. And we're now approaching the high school. We're beginning to put those up, and as we all understand, high school is a whole different ballgame, because you could potentially, the course of study, and especially at Shellman High School, it exceeds many college catalogs in terms of number of courses, depending upon the pathway each student takes. So there is no way, and if you look at any of the high schools, any of the systems throughout the metro area, there, there's got to be more of a condensation of concentration on the basic courses. And right now, until we see how long this closure will last, and what the guidance is going to be from the state in terms of course completion, when we're coming back, if we're coming back this year, what's going to happen, then we'll expand those opportunities appropriately. I know at the State Department, we're having conversations in terms of what do we do with seniors at this point? Because to be honest, if we come back April 13th, seniors are only scheduled to be there for another two weeks. Then they're checking out, and early in May, there's graduation. So the time is of the essence at that point for the seniors. I've been in contact with Dr. Tenney at Nunez Community College on our dual enrollment, dual enrollment courses that our high school kids are taking. You know, what is the, what is Nunez going to be doing in terms of their courses, and then our students who are taking those courses, how we're going to handle that? Because a dual enrollment means you get college credit and you get high school credit. Well, we can handle the high school part of it regardless of what the college does. So in terms of graduation, they can still get the high school credit that they'll need. In terms of receiving the college credit, then our kids are going to have to follow whatever will be outlined at Nunez. I know there's going to be an online component for the more academic classes. So if you're taking English, or math, or science, or social studies, or any of the ones that are more classroom-based, there'll be some, there'll be online assignments at that point. Some of the issue may be with our students who are taking courses that are more performance-based, like welding, electrical work, CNA, Certified Nursing Assistant, which require clinical hours. Well, these kids are not going to, at this point, be allowed into hospitals and nursing homes to finish clinical hours to get their industry-based certification as a CNA, as a Certified Nursing Assistant. So all of that piece of it, that part of it is being discussed now. I just want to, you know, give assurance that whatever it takes for us to make sure that our kids are going to, especially our seniors, complete that high school curriculum, we will do, and they will have that opportunity. At this point, everybody, you realize it's only Tuesday. Seems like we've been in this a month now, and we've been in it Saturday, Sunday, Monday, and today is Tuesday. So all of these decisions statewide are not yet met. They're not made yet. So everybody's still in discussion, because what happens from an academic standpoint, not only do we have local regulations, but there are state regulations that have to be followed, which is policies made by the BESI Board, and actually laws or vice statutes imposed by the legislature. Then above that, there are national regulations that come into play with Louisiana's ESAP Plan, as we well know, we've been through, that deal with assessment and accountability. So all of these federal waivers have to be applied for and given. So as I talked to a few people before we started this meeting tonight, I think I've been on more conference calls in the last four days than I've been in the last year, with every local people, state people, and national people. Congressman Steve Scalise reached out to us. We had a conference call this morning over a couple of issues, at which point I said to him, the only things I'm looking for right, from a school systems point of view right now, from the Fed, the federal level, is a relaxation in some waivers in the food service program for reimbursable meal issues, without getting technical, all this offer versus serve, and what's a reimbursable meal, and all these kinds of things. Because we have some state waivers, but we're looking for some federal waivers. And the other thing, asking him to please transfer the urgency to U.S. Department of Education to take a look at the federal waivers necessary to make sure that when the students come back, hopefully, that they're not facing statewide testing and accountability that really they won't be prepared for. So all of that is happening simultaneously. In your, in your packet, there is a letter somewhere. We just put it in. I mean, we are fortunate that our state representative, Ray Garofalo, has been named the chairman of the House Education Committee. So he has been working very closely with Sandy Holloway, who is the president of BESI this year, and the governor, and it's good to see everybody working together in this issue, to identify different laws that the governor has to by executive order waive, or anything which has to be done legislatively. So in these last couple of days, a lot of these things are being identified. For example, simple, I say simple things, but in, in the state statutes, we are required to have a minimum of 63,720 instructional minutes per year. Somebody has to waive that. BESI policy says if we're out more than 18 days, then school performance scores and district performance scores will not be done that year. So that's already taken care of. But there are a lot of other statutes that we have that must be waived. The governor has done some of this, as you can see in this letter, and we're working on more. So things like statewide testing, minimum number of days you have to be in school. Hopefully, they will not have to be made up minute for minute. Teacher evaluation, that has to do with what they call the compass evaluation system, and value-added data. You know, all that has to be waived this particular year, because it deals with how well kids do on their assessments. Student attendance, credentialing of teachers. It just goes on and on and on. We can, in the field, go ahead and do what we need to do to make things happen on a day-by-day basis, but when the dust settles, all of these things that are either in policy or in law need to be waived, modified, in, in some way, needs to be changed, so that people are not hurt, students are not hurt, teachers are not hurt. And I'm talking from in the educational system. And that's occurring, but it's not necessarily the highest priority of the state right now, because we're dealing with a virus, they're dealing with the testing, testing people for the virus. I'm not talking about academic testing at this point, and handling that crisis, and what we're going to do as good citizens in a social society. So that's taking precedence, and we're trying to identify and make sure that things that we need to operate effectively, so that we can do the best things for kids are in place. So I know I'm going a real roundabout way, but for our school system and our community, I think what we're saying to people at this point is, we are providing meals, breakfast and lunch, for students, and for any child in St. Bernard Parish, regardless of where you go to school, and whatever your age is, even preschool. And then secondly, we're providing some online opportunities and paper-based opportunities for kids to do some, to have some educational experiences while they're home, but realizing that families are in all different situations, and childcare situations are very difficult. So the expectation, we can't expect kids to sit there for six hours and have somebody with them at home and do a whole list of educational lessons that we give to them. So we've got to be mindful of the different experiences each family has. So they're there for those that can do them, and those that can help their children do them, and we will understand when our students come back, that we will have to deal individually with each one, just like we had to do in Katrina. Because as our kids were coming back to us, as you remember, we had kids who had been at three, four, five different schools, or to no school at all for months. So we had to deal with those individual situations because of that event, and whatever will happen here in the community, when our children come back to us, then we will work with them individually, one-on-one, to make sure that no child is going to be adversely affected from an educational perspective. I am just, just amazed, driving around and talking to our staff members, and I know the people around this table do, and most of the people in the community, just at the, what great and wonderful people that we have working in this school system, and how much they care about kids, and how much they're willing to do. You know, we're not hearing people, "I can't do that," or "I can't do it." It's, "How can I help? What can we do together?" And I think I'm just blessed to be the superintendent of schools here, and to have the magnificent staff, the people that we have working here with us. Everyone, I mean, the cafeteria ladies have been incredible, our custodians have been wonderful, you know, our principals, our assistant principals, just everyone right on down the line.
Thank you, Ms. Fochek, and we feel blessed to have you as our superintendent, and to have this board work together so closely. This is such an unprecedented time in our lives, and we thank you, Ms. Fochek, the administration, and all of our staff members. And, you know, I went to several schools today, this morning, too, to see how it was going, and, you know, it was, as you said, we had volunteer teachers helping, you know, give out the lunches, not knowing how many people were going to show up and all. So, you know, we, to put it plainly, we worked, we pledged to continue to work on an ongoing basis in, with what we have, and, you know, this is, again, just an unprecedented time in our lives, and to see everyone still work cooperatively in the, in the best way that they can to help our students and our families in St. Bernard Parish is a wonderful thing. So thank you, and, you know, check the website for any, any other changes, right, Ms. Fochek?
Yes, we're going to be, it's going to be ongoing. We're going to be communicating with people through our website, through our Facebook page, and direct communication as much as we can.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Egan?
Yeah. I'm sure everyone here would like to shake everybody's hand who has done these things that Doris has said, a hug. Both of them are voting right now, we know. But just a little more, and I know, just the way I feel, because I know what, you know, Nora, my wife, was very concerned about the kids getting something to eat with the program that the club she's in does, because every Friday, they would go and prepare meals, well, little meals for the children for the weekend. We covered that, so that's fine. But I think it deserves a heck of a clap, a thank, and give them applause to everyone that has worked on this. This is fantastic, and we're taking care of our students, both education-wise, and of course, with a little meal to eat. And believe me, Doris, you did it again, girl.
Wow.
Fantastic. You, you and, no, you're just one good lady, knows what she's doing, but you ran the show, and the show is beautiful. That's all I got to say. Thank you. Now, please, if you would lead us, Diana, just give us, we should clap for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Egan, and Ms. Fochek, you said it right. We are all so blessed to live in a community that pulls together in the hard times. our personnel. Thank you very much. Okay, anybody else? Okay. We will move on to the next item, which is an emergency resolution. And the resolution reads as-
Before you read it, can I just say something to preface the remarks of the resolution? We're going to, we're hopefully going to pass this emergency resolution for a couple of reasons. Back in Katrina, when federal funds became available after the event and as we had to apply for them, some of the questions was, "Did you declare an emergency?" Well, what do you mean, did we declare an emergency? Because we are structured, in many states in the country, school systems are under local governmental bodies or under a state body. In Louisiana, local school systems are separate political subdivisions. And in order to qualify, if there is any federal funding coming down, the first thing they're asking, "Do you have, did you declare an emergency? Do you have essential personnel listed? Do you have programs or policies in place of how you're going to pay them and who's going to do what?" So just in an abundance of caution, if something does become available for the additional expenses that we are definitely going to, are incurring now and will occur more if this thing goes on for a long period of time, we want to go through the process and just make sure we're dotting the i's and crossing the t's. Just because the governor declared an emergency for the state and President McGinnis declared one for the parish, we, as a separate political subdivision, want to make sure that this body declares the emergency and then transfers some of, you know how we go and we get permission to bid certain things, contracts and whatever, and transfer some of these responsibilities to me so that if I have to move fast on something, I have them temporarily, that I have the authority to do so until that emergency is lifted, until the order is lifted. So that's the reason we're doing this, not for anything else. To me, it's just if we have potential funding available, that we've got everything in place, that we don't have to backtrack.
Thank you, Ms. Voeche, for that explanation. Okay, and the resolution reads as such, "Whereas President Donald Trump has declared a national state of public health emergency, and Governor John Bell Edwards has declared a state of public health emergency related to COVID-19, whereas proclamation by John Bell Edwards 2027 issued on March 13, 2020 has ordered the closure of all public schools in Louisiana until April 13, 2020, and whereas John Bell Edwards 202027 urges school districts to continue to provide meals to students and to provide distance learning opportunities to students if the districts are able. And whereas the Louisiana Department of Education has issued guidance on the waiver of rules related to the United States Department of Agriculture's student meal programs and on the Louisiana laws and regulations related to distance learning, and whereas a number of decisions will need to be made and contracts entered into by the St. Bernard Parish school system in a very compressed timeframe to meet the needs of the students, teachers, and families of St. Bernard Parish during the period of closure. And whereas the St. Bernard Parish School Board believes that a special delegation of authority to the superintendent of St. Bernard Parish Schools is in order to provide for the most effective and efficient operation of the St. Bernard Parish school system during this state of emergency. And whereas the time-sensitive nature of the circumstances created by the state of emergency call for the suspension of the ordinary rules of the St. Bernard Parish School Board with regard to the introduction and adoption of resolutions. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the St. Bernard Parish School Board declares a state of emergency in the St. Bernard Parish School District, be it further resolved that the St. Bernard Parish School Board suspends its rules with regard to the introduction and adoption of resolutions, be it further resolved that the St. Bernard Parish School Board urges the superintendent of St. Bernard Parish Schools to provide meals to students in St. Bernard Parish to the extent of her determination that St. Bernard Parish School District is practically and fiscally capable in accordance with the guidance provided by the Louisiana Department of Education and the United States Department of Agriculture, and to designate essential personnel to provide these services. Be it further resolved that the St. Bernard Parish School Board urges the superintendent of St. Bernard Parish Schools to provide distance learning opportunities to the students of St. Bernard Parish School District to the extent of her determination that the St. Bernard Parish School District is practically and fiscally capable in accordance with the guidance provided by the Louisiana Department of Education, and to designate essential personnel to provide each of these services. Be it further resolved that the St. Bernard Parish School Board delegates the authority to the superintendent of St. Bernard Parish Schools to carry out the purposes and intent of this resolution, including, but not limited, to the ability to make decisions with regard to student meals and the provision of distance learning, and to execute such contracts or enter such agreements as the superintendent determines are necessary or appropriate in that regard, without the requirement to seek or obtain explicit authority from the St. Bernard Parish School Board and to designate essential personnel to perform these services. Be it further resolved that the St. Bernard Parish School Board designates to the superintendent the authority to continue to pay school employees their regular compensation during the period schools are closed, adjust curriculum, work schedules, compensation, and staff assignments without any further board approval, adjust the school calendar, apply to Bessie, Louisiana Department of Education, and/or United States Department of Education, or other governmental bodies for waivers of regulations or requirements, the compliance of which is impacted by COVID-19, apply for waivers, grants, reimbursements, aid, and other COVID-19-related matters on behalf of the St. Bernard Parish School Board, and to take any other action reasonably necessary to implement the above directives. Be it further resolved by the St. Bernard Parish School Board that the superintendent of St. Bernard Parish Schools shall make good and faithful efforts to inform the members of the St. Bernard Parish School Board of decisions, contracts, and agreements made and entered into under the authority of this resolution, and be it finally resolved that this resolution shall continue in effect from the date of adoption until the lifting of the state of emergency by the St. Bernard Parish School Board. And that will be passed on this 17th day of March 2020. Does the board wish to adjoint in a joint acclamation?
Yes.
All in favor of the joint acclamation, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, resolution passes. Thank you very much. Okay, next item on the agenda is a motion to incorporate the report of the March 10, 2020 General Committee Meeting into the minutes of the March regular monthly meeting. There's a motion by Mr. Warner, seconded by Mr. Smith. Any discussion? There being none, please cast your votes.
Whoops, I went pretty quickly.
Motion passes ten zero.
Thank you, Ms. Voeche. Next item is a motion to approve the Head Start Continuation Application. There was a recommendation by the committee. Motion by Mr. England, seconded by Ms. Lemoine. Any discussion? Please cast your votes. And of course, we discuss these at the committee meeting.
Motion passes ten zero.
Next item is a motion to approve the administration's recommendation for a multi-insurer layered coverage for property insurance. There was no recommendation from the committee. Good evening, gentlemen, and with us, we have Mr. Clements and Mr. Clements and Mr. Fernandez. Good evening.
Okay, we're here back again today after another week of trying to get some improvement. Mr. Clements and Mr. Clements did get some further information from some companies, but nothing that really improved the position. They weren't able to give us any better rates than had already been on the table. So the rates we have presented to you last week are still in effect for this, and our recommendation is, whatever your pleasure is in terms of renewing.
(laughter)
Mr. England, oops. Thank you, Mr. English. Thank you, gentlemen, for being here this afternoon. I'm looking at these different layers, and I made the motion to approve it last time because we had to take a deeper look at these figures and that. And looking at these figures, we would have to have, you know, the first four layers, I can see, you know, as far as with the $50,000, $50 million loss, you know, if you had a tornado or something of that nature, I believe, you know, fit Sherman High School, $50 million, Sherman High Schools, you know, would cost approximately that much, you know, to replace Sherman High School. But the $150 million, I don't think we're going to be getting our money's worth on that. There'd have to be quite a few other schools that would have to be in the same situation. So to me, I would be in favor to approve the first four layers and leave the fifth layer off.
And you placing that in the form of a motion?
Yes, I would like to put that in the form of a motion, yes.
Okay. Mr. England's recommendation or motion is to accept?
Accept the first four layers.
The first four layers.
It'll be up to $150 million of coverage.
Okay.
Right.
Okay, is there a second on that motion? There's a second by Ms. Jackson. And I just, I have a question. I know we said we were going to wait, Mr. Clements, to take action on this. So the, were y'all in touch with the companies as far as seeing if they had any other, any other figures possibly?
No, even we've updated our list of companies that have contacted us, that have been back with us since initial contact, as five o'clock today, and there were no others. But we did have some additional answers, but those answers were, "See him."
Mm-hmm. Like it or not, huh?
This is what they got. I can't beat what's on there now, so we're not going to go.
Okay. And when is, when is the insurance, the date?
April 1st.
Expiration? Of our present insurance?
Yes, April 1st.
April 1st, okay. So, okay, thank you. Anyone else? Any other questions or comments? It's either like it or not, if you want insurance. Okay, all righty. Well, there is a motion on the floor to accept the first four tiers with exclusion of the last tier. Mr. Smith, you had something? Okay, there being no further discussion, please cast your votes.
Motion passes ten zero.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Next item is a motion to approve the administration's request for permission to advertise for bid for the official general. Motion by Mr. Warner, is there a second? Second, Mr. Smith, any discussion? Please cast your votes.
Motion passes ten zero.
Thank you. Next item is a motion to approve the administration's request for permission to advertise for bid vehicle painting and repairs, and there was a recommendation by the committee. There's a motion by Mr. Smith, is there a second? Second, Ms. Lemoine, any discussion? Please cast your votes.
Motion passes ten zero.
Thank you. Next item is a motion to approve the administration's request to advertise for bid for gas, diesel, and other fluids. There was a recommendation by the committee. Motion by Ms. White, seconded by Mr. Smith. Any discussion? Please cast your votes.
Motion passes ten zero.
Thank you. Next item is a motion to approve the administration's request to advertise for bid for paper, cleaning, and custodial supplies. There was a recommendation by the committee. Motion by Ms. Esquivel, seconded by Mr. Warner. Any discussion? Please cast your votes.
Motion passes ten zero.
Thank you. Next item is a motion to approve the administration's request to advertise for bid for milk.
(inaudible) we got $2,000.
(laughter) That's right. We gave out $2,000 today, yeah.
There's a motion by Mr. Smith, seconded by Mr. Warner. Any discussion?
Actually, $4,000. There's one for breakfast, one for lunch.
We gave out $4,000 for cartons of milk today, yeah.
Well, I don't know.
Yep.
(inaudible).
They better keep working, too.
Any other discussion? There being none, please cast your votes.
Motion passes ten zero.
Next item is a motion to approve the administration's request to advertise for bid for bread. There was a recommendation by the committee. Motion by Ms. Lemoine, seconded by Mr. England. Any discussion? There being none, please cast your votes.
Motion passes ten zero.
Thank you. Next item is a motion to approve the administration to request to advertise for bids for spices, seasonings, class two, cereal, dry beans, and crackers, class three, frozen foods, class five. Meat, mean and meat products, class six. Meat and meat products.
Those mean products.
Okay.
Mean meat.
Mean meat? That is a typo, thank you. Class six, poultry and eggs, class seven, seafood products, class eight, and canned goods, class nine. There was a recommendation by the committee. Motion by Mr. Campbell, seconded by Mr. Smith. It's good to have a laugh at this time. Okay.
That's why I put it, thank you.
Yeah, okay. Thank you, Ms. Fernandez. That was really good. Thanks. Okay, any other discussion? Please cast your votes.
Motion passes ten zero.
Thank you, Mr. Fernandez. Next item is a motion to approve the resolution regarding an increase in the 2021 MFP, and there was a recommendation by the committee. Okay, there's a motion by Mr. Warner. Is there a second? Or would the board like to do a joint acclamation?
Joint acclamation.
Okay. Did we read this into the minutes?
No, we didn't.
No?
Got three more to read.
Okay. So the resolution reads as such for the minutes, "Whereas the Minimum Foundation Program, MFP, establishes the state funding component of the K-12 public education system in Louisiana, and the legislature is required to fully fund the formula. Whereas there was no increase in the base per pupil for the school years of 2009 through 2010, 2010 to '11, 2011 to '12, 2012 to '13, and 2013 through '14. Whereas in the 2014 regular session, the MFP base per pupil increased from $3,855 to $3,961 for the 2014-2015 school year. Whereas in the 2019 regular session, the MFP base per pupil increased from $3,961 to $4,105 for the 2019-2020 school year. And whereas had the MFP base per pupil been increased each year since 2008 by the anticipated 2.75%, the 2020-21 MFP would be $5,195. Whereas the governor's executive budget anticipates and seeks to fund a 1.375 increase in the base per pupil 2020-21, raising the base per pupil from 4,015 to 4,070. Whereas this would be the first time in over a decade that the base per pupil in the MFP was increased in two consecutive years. Whereas the St. Bernard Parish School Board has been absorbing every increasing operational cost from health insurance to curriculum to align with new state standards, to increasing demands of the state accountability system, to technology, to security of students, more recently, to protection from cyber attacks on student and employee data, without consistently increasing state funding. Whereas the potential increase in the MFP will benefit local school districts in every parish, as well as every public charter school in the state, as well as afford school districts with the ability to continue to strive toward higher teacher and support worker compensation. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the St. Bernard Parish School Board supports the proposal to increase the base per pupil funding in the MFP by not less than 1.375%." to increase the base per pupil funding in the MFP by not less than 1.375%. Be it further resolved that the St. Bernard Parish School Board urges Bessie to incorporate an increase in the base per pupil of not less than 1.375% in the MFP it recommends to the legislature. Be it further resolved that the St. Bernard Parish School Board urges the legislature, and in particular, the St. Bernard Parish Legislative Delegation, to approve an MFP with an increase in the base per pupil of not less than 1.375%. Finally, be it further resolved that the St. Bernard Parish School Board directs the Superintendent to forward a copy of this resolution to each member of the St. Bernard Parish Legislative Delegation, to Chairman Senator Cleos Fields, Chairman Representative Ray Garafalo, and Governor John Bell Edwards, given under our hand and seal of the St. Bernard Parish School Board on this day, the 17th of March 2020. And the board wanted to vote on a joint acclamation. All in favor of the joint acclamation signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Resolution is passed. Thank you. Okay.
(inaudible) a question on that?
Uh, yes, with who on?
So if they don't increase it for 2021, it goes back to what it was?
What it is this year.
And that is, it went from 3,961 to 4,105. So that's where it would stay?
Actually, 4015.
4015, there's a misprint in that line that you were just reading from.
Oh, okay.
3961, and it says to 4,105.
Yeah.
But it's actually 4,015, according to Mr. Fernandez.
Oh, okay.
If you look two lines down, because they do have a misprint, it should be 4,015, and it's correctly done two lines down from it.
Okay.
First, when they sent it, it was...
So that would be, if they don't increase it, though, what we're asking for, then, and if they do pass an MFP, it would just be last year's number.
It'll be at 4015, which it is this year.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Jackson?
Any update? The legislative session is moving forward?
We do not know how they're going to continue. They do have to pass a budget. This will have to be in the budget, and they've got to pass it prior to the end of the fiscal year. So I couldn't tell you what dates they would do that.
Okay. And just a comment on the resolution, as far as the per pupil, base per pupil, that's the amount that we would get from the state per student. Correct, Ms. Votche?
It's kind of complicated, yeah. It's the base per pupil, then there are weighted values on top, then there are different levels of the MFP, and then the split becomes 65/35, state versus local on a statewide basis, and each individual district has a different split depending upon their relative wealth. So that's a long way to say that's just the beginning number of the formula. It doesn't mean we get that much money per student. It's a base per pupil to start a very complex calculation moving forward.
Thank you for that. Anyone else? All right, we'll move on to item 17, a motion to approve the resolution regarding the use of TIPS for purchasing. And there was a recommendation by the committee, and the use of TIPS resolution reads as such. Whereas the St. Bernard Parish School Board operates under the public bid law specifically Louisiana Revise Statute 382211, which governs the method for purchasing, whereas LRS 38221N authorizes an alternative method of purchasing to a school system to make purchases from or through a group purchasing organization. Whereas Louisiana School Boards Association has developed a relationship with a group purchasing organization, specifically TIPS. Whereas every school district that is a member of the LSBA has access to utilize TIPS. Whereas those school districts that have utilized TIPS have recognized calculable savings in their purchasing. Now, therefore be it resolved that the St. Bernard Parish School Board establishes that it is the policy of the St. Bernard Parish School System that use of TIPS should be one of the options considered in the procurement of materials, equipment, and supplies. Be it further resolved that the St. Bernard Parish School Board urges and directs the Superintendent to carry out the policy herein, establish and direct the administrative procurement staff to consult TIPS on all purchases and to utilize TIPS when TIPS offers the most cost-effective purchasing option. Finally, be it resolved that a copy of this resolution will be provided to the Superintendent, to the administrative official who is principally responsible for procurement of materials, equipment, and supplies, given under our hand and seal of St. Bernard Parish School Board the 17th day of March 2020. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. And we have one more resolution. It's resolution night tonight. Okay, and this resolution is regarding the sales and use tax collection by the administration, and this was a recommendation by the committee, and it reads, "Sales and use tax collection in administration." Whereas the Article VII, Section 3 of Louisiana Constitution provides that local sales and use taxes are to be collected by a single collector in each parish. Whereas Article VII, Section 3 also provides for the use of a parish commissioner or one of the local political subdivisions to service the single parish collector of local sales and use taxes. Whereas the authority to collect local sales and use taxes has been determined by the courts to include the authority to administer the collection, including making decisions as to when to audit persons or businesses thought to be unlawfully evading taxation or in some cases collecting sales taxes on transactions and failing to fully remit them to the local collector. Whereas school boards serve as the single parish collector of local sales and use taxes in over 30 parishes. Whereas there are interest groups that desire to amend the Louisiana Constitution to allow the legislature to repeal the authority of local governments to control the collection of local sales taxes and place that authority with the state, a concept often referred to as state central collection. Whereas state central collection would have the state taking possession of local tax revenues, withholding an administrative fee, then dispersing the balance down to the school board or other local taxing authority. Whereas state central collection poses two greater risks, that local education dollars will not be promptly dispersed, or that the administrative fee withheld by the state may become a means of resolving state fiscal issues. Whereas repealing or diminishing the constitutional authority for local collection of local sales and use taxes will impair the ability of those local collectors to perform the necessary function of auditing vendors to ensure compliance with the legal obligation to collect and remit local sales taxes. Whereas given the vital role that the proper, effective, and efficient collection of local sales and use taxes plays in the operation of school districts and the education of children, the Louisiana School Boards Association has always fought any efforts to repeal, reduce, or constrain the authority of the local collector to collect local sales and use taxes regardless of who has offered the proposal. Now, therefore be it resolved that the school district by action of its duly elected governing authority does hereby urge and request the Louisiana Legislature, and in particular, the Legislative Delegation of St. Bernard Parish, to oppose any legislative effort that repeals, reduces, or constrains the authority of the local collector to collect and administer the collection of local sales and use taxes. Finally, be it resolved that a copy of this resolution be provided to each member of the Legislative Delegation of St. Bernard Parish and the Governor of the State of Louisiana, given under our hand and seal of the St. Bernard Parish School Board the 17th day of March 2020. Okay. Does the board wish to join in a joint acclamation?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor of the joint acclamation signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, resolution passes, and thank you. And the next item were the Superintendent's recommendations.
Just a final statement that I know we have the trust of the community that our school board and our school system employees will do what is right and good by all the children of St. Bernard Parish. We are going to be doing updates on our website and our Facebook page as things change. I'm going to be doing actual in-person updates at least a couple of times a week, and as soon as we get information, we're going to make sure our parents have that information. And I just want to assure everyone that this community, the community of St. Bernard, always pulls together in any time of crisis. So I am in constant contact with President Guy McGinnis, with Sheriff Jimmy Pullman, now with Kim Keen, who is in charge of our local hospital, the Ashner Hospital, and all of the officials in the parish. When one of us does something, we consult with the other. We all follow the CDC guidelines, the Department of Health guidelines, and what needs to be done at both the state and the federal level. But I just, you know, the leadership in this particular parish is such that we can pick up the phone and call each other, and we are informing each other of what is happening in each of our entities. So I think the parish is in very good hands with all of us pulling together and in the same direction.
Anyone else? Mr. Warner?
You mentioned on the website and Facebook, are you going to be doing that also on Penn TV?
Yes, yes. We had, I did one yesterday or something, my days are running together, but that's been showing on our page and on Penn TV.
On Facebook.
Oh, on Facebook, yeah, Facebook page. Wherever, wherever social media, and I just want to give a shout out to Alex Schneider too, who has done an incredible job of coordinating that. And I know we have Barry and Jack that does filming and such, Alex who does the coordination of all of the information that we put out, and she's been doing a masterful job of that. So, and talking about our food service people and our curriculum people, I wanted to make sure that we gave her a shout out too, because that young lady has been phenomenal, and she juggles a family life with two small children as well, so kudos.
Thank you, Ms. Votche, and thanks again to you and our administration and all of our staff members who have pulled together during this time. And as you said, St. Bernard is a wonderful parish. We're blessed to have wonderful people in it, and, you know, we just wish everyone to stay, wash your hands, stay strong, and stay healthy. And until next time, is there a motion to adjourn?
Ooh.
Motion by Mr. Campbell, seconded by Ms. Esseveda, all in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The meeting's now adjourned. Thank you and good night.